I like I lead as to the United States of America. And to the Republic which stands one nation on every island and indivisible with liberty and justice.
Welcome everyone to the February twenty seventh meeting of the Town of Manlius planning board. First item on our agenda is for approval of our minutes from February thirteenth.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February thirteenth.
Second by Judy, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, the minutes are approved as written. First item on our agenda this evening is a special use permit renewal for Rufo's landscaping. This is property located at forty nine sixty seven North Eagle Village Road, tax map number zero nine nine dash one dash twenty seven point one. Any discussion?
There's been no complaints, no problems.
Any discussion in opposition? Therefore, I would entertain a motion.
I'm making a motion through the special permit for seven years.
For seven years, a second, second Valerie and second by Richard, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We will notify Rufo's. Next item on our agenda is an application by Daniel Maggie. It is a two-lot subdivision for property located at eight zero one four Peck Road, Kirkville, New York. It is scheduled this evening for a public hearing. At our previous meeting, we did seek her, that has been completed. Madam Secretary, did we properly publish the notice?
Yeah.
Does anyone care if they haven't read?
I'll make a motion.
A second Valerie's motion.
Motion by Valerie to lay the reading, second by Richard, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Who would entertain a motion to open the public hearing?
I'm making a motion to open the public hearing.
Judy?
I'll second.
Second by Valerie, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are now open for a public hearing on the two-lot subdivision on Peck Road, eight zero one four Peck Road. Does anyone care to speak regarding this?
I'll make a motion to close the vote.
Do we have anyone on line?
No.
We do not. So we have a motion to close the public hearing? Second by Judy, I'm sorry, second by Erin. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, public hearing is hereby closed. Folks, we're at a position where we can discuss the two-lot subdivision and determine whether what your feelings are.
Joe, one of the things we do. It is, we always put the building envelope. On the subdivision plan. And we kind of got away from it with a couple of subdivisions we've done. This does not show the building envelopes.
That's because there really no building on that.
Well, but it doesn't, if I'm looking at this properly, it does not say that. I thought I saw a map that says specifically.
Not approved this building lot.
Oh, I'm looking at an older.
Not too.
Okay.
You're right, I'm trying to get Richard, as usual, except.
Okay, I've got an old one.
I've got an old map that does not say that. So I stand corrected.
So that's a landlot parcel that is going to be designated non-buildable, nobody can build a house on it.
Correct.
It's a non-conforming lot because it's a landlocked lot.
Yep.
And it actually makes the remaining lot more important.
Yeah, yes, it does, it does, it does. And it was previously planned lot before, for any wise. Folks, I entertain a motion for or against a subdivision.
I'll make a motion to approve the subdivision for two-lot subdivision.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Heather, second by Richard.
Heather.
Valerie.
Valerie, I am off tonight. And this is the one with the.
The jet lag.
Jet lag, yeah. Motion made by Heather, second by Valerie. Richard, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries, subdivision is approved. Our next item on the agenda is an application by Horizon Solar Power and Catalyst Energy. This is their second presentation regarding a site plan and subdivision for a solar array on Peck Road.
Yes, homeless chairman, Mario, this evening.
Very well.
How are you? We're doing fine, thank you. Happy to be back. To reintroduce myself, my name is Andy Malcolm with Horizon Solar Power and representative of this project tonight. Lisa, I have a couple slides. Please.
Are you not getting the little locks?
I got it.
Okay.
Yep. Alright, so I'm. Alright, looks good. Alright, so we've had quite a bit of progress since the last time I was here in November already. The ZBA unanimously approved our area variances for our subdivision. I just take a step back, bring everybody together where we were. Last time we spoke about this project, you know, we had some, there was some substantive discussion and there was issue that there would potentially need to be a subdivision in order to make this project allowable because the locks were so screwy, to be blunt. We needed a handful of variances in order to get through that process. After some good discussion with the ZBA, they did unanimously approve all of our variances. Once they were able to kind of wrap their head around how these locks got so convoluted and what we're actually looking for. So here, you can see on the screen, the left-hand screenshot is the current situation. The light blue is one parcel and the yellow is another parcel. And what we're looking to do is to subdivide and redraw the property lines to match the right-hand picture. This would preserve the access back to the field. It will straighten the property line. It'll bring down the Warner's residential property line to make this line here a very nice clean, even east to west run. And then also allow the Warner's to split off their, what is now currently a rental property here in purple for the eventuality that they transfer that property, that house to their heirs or the heirs should decide to sell it, et cetera. That would allow that to happen, that the rental unit has its own parcel. In addition, this redrawn will bring in a number of outbuildings along Peck Road that are currently used by the Warner's for their business that has run out of their home. Those, those, two of those barns are on, were on, are currently on the overall farmland property. One of them actually straddles a property line between the Warner's residence, which is owned by Donna and Mary Jane, his husband and wife, and and the land here on the south that is owned by Mary Jane as her seller. So I think the general conclusion by everybody at the ZBA, as well as Attorney Jamie Sutton and ourselves, as well as the Warner's, is that this will really clean up everything. It'll make everything a lot neater. It'll make more logical sense to bring these outbuildings into the land owned by the Warner's as part of their residential lots. It will eliminate the shared, the dependency by the Warner's on a shared access in this little purple area here. Currently, the Warner's have a flag lot with only twenty foot of road frontage along Peck Road. And then they share that, that parallels another twenty foot lane back to the rental unit and they share a driveway. So this will preserve their access to Peck Road by this new yellow area in the south and their dependence there. Now this purple lot will have an entirety of forty foot frontage along Peck. And although, you know, none of this is anywhere close to the design standards that are currently existed in town, it will bring everything in closer compliance and more logically layout as they stand.
You talked real quick and I didn't catch everything you said, but there is a joint driveway right now.
Yes.
That serves the yellow lot and the purple lot, if I'm correct.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
That, what you're saying is that's going away?
They will continue to share it in the meantime, but it will no longer be owned twenty foot by the Warner's and, well, it'll no longer be owned twenty foot by the Warner's residence and twenty foot by their rental property. It'll be forty foot by the rental property and they're, but they're really, they will continue to share that, that driveway. There will be recorded shared driveway agreements as required by the attorney.
A shared agreement or easement?
I, I'll defer to the town attorney. Jamie wanted a shared driveway agreement, which I think is essentially an easement. It is, it conveys rights. It'll be recorded.
It could be recorded.
We wouldn't necessarily have to be recorded, but.
It would, it would more likely be an easement over. Who's gonna own, who's gonna own the forty feet?
What is now, what will be the purple lot.
Purple.
Yes.
So the purple lot needs to give an easement.
Right.
The yellow lot.
That's right.
Over, oh, oh, so that they can share the driveway.
Correct. And I would, that would be recorded easement. Yes.
That, that's what I would suggest.
I would require that, I, I think.
Makes perfect sense to me.
Okay. And, and I'm assuming, I could be wrong. But I'm assuming because of the reconfiguration of the purple and the yellow lot, there's a plan to sell those at some point in time. Because they are, even though they're flag lots, with the variance, they're conforming lots.
Right, right.
And is that the plan of the owner?
The plan, this would be, they plan on living there until they're deceased or they can no longer live there on their own, is my understanding. So at some point, that, that would be done. They have a tenant who they really, is a really great tenant in the purple lot, what is, what will hopefully become a purple lot. And so while they have no plans to sell that currently, they would then have the opportunity to sell that to their renter or to transfer it as a, as a homestead or as a house for their, for their heirs or potentially sell it, yes.
I, I get it. The only thing I would say is, I want whatever the agreement is, whether it's an easement and agreement, whether it's recorded.
Yeah.
Okay.
As per having property, I think that makes absolutely sense.
Okay. Okay.
Any more questions on this? I'll call it a subdivision, but really it's sort of a property line rearrangement and you won't split.
If I could ask that, are we looking at simply a subdivision plan? Is that what we're looking at? Or is this also a site plan?
This is a site plan as well.
We have a site plan in this packet, which I don't think we have where the solar array is gonna go.
Good, I submitted that anywhere. And I have, I can show it here.
And so it ignores the wetlands, they put it over the wetlands?
The wetlands are, are, so we have a wetlands expert on our, on our team from GEI Consultants. Name is Valerie, she may be on the phone if she needs to dive in, but these wetlands are, are very limited and isolated wetlands. And as such, in her expert opinion and having a lot of experience with wetlands in central New York, she, her, her strong thing is that these are non-jurisdictional wetlands, that the simple defined jurisdiction and in the court, if the court does claim jurisdiction, that then they would see this as a no, no impact. Driven steel piles are all we're proposing to do in these wetland areas that have been delineated and driven steel posts are not considered impacts to the court.
You're way above my.
Right.
Yeah.
So we will.
So I'll, I'll turn to Doug and ask the question because we have buffer areas from wetlands. We have setback areas from the property lines. Does the plan that, this site plan that they've given us, does it meet those requirements?
Do you know this? Setbacks, I think, the first thing is we want something that needs to be required. Seeing that where his assumptions are.
Right, and we have submitted those requests, what we call jurisdictional requests or jurisdictional determination requests. Those have been submitted. And so we're happy to provide those prior to, you know, bill of permits or whatever.
Okay, that would be great. Then, then we can make that.
Okay.
But Rich is right, we do have thirty five feet. Okay, so that's in our, it's design standards for lots. So these are about lots. This is, this is in our subdivision regulation. For the purpose of determining a buildable lot in the context of a lot building envelope, defined as an area of a lot that falls within a required setback, shall include an area large enough to fit a reasonably building, which is no closer than, so building lot, the, the building envelope. Could be no closer than twenty five feet to a New York State or twenty five feet from a lot land under jurisdiction, the Army Corps of Engineers.
And a hundred and twenty five feet from the DUC. It's gonna say in there, right, one hundred plus twenty five.
Right.
Right. In that same sentence.
Yes.
Yeah.
And no closer than twenty five feet to the one hundred foot buffer.
Right.
The problem is, this isn't a building.
But it is a subdivision that we're looking at here. I get it. I, I need to think through this. I haven't really thought through this. It's, this was really designed for houses. So we have to think through that.
It's a good question. I think, I think the first, the first issue is, right? You know, Valerie believes that these are gonna be non-jurisdictional.
Right. But maybe. But even if it is non-jurisdictional, we, we require it from both the DUC and Army Corps of Engineers. So I gotta think through this.
Well, if it's, if the DUC declines jurisdiction, it's not an ease.
That's right, then it's an Army Corps of Engineers.
And it may, may or may not be an Army Corps of Engineers. That's true. Also, if they could just simply define jurisdiction overall, and then in which case it's.
Then, then we have no issues.
Right, 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 right. And if it is a core wetland, again, by their standards, driven piles are not, literally not impacts, not even measured as impacts. Not to mention they have a day minimums twenty five hundred foot or twenty five hundred square foot threshold below which, if you are having an impact up to that point, it's, it's essentially determined a day minimums or no permanent impact. Valerie, if you have anything to add, I see you're there. Do feel free to jump in, please.
Yes, I'm, I'm here. I didn't want to interrupt anyone. I hope you all can hear me. My name's Valerie Smith. I'm with GEI Consultants and I am part of the team hired by Horizon Solar. My specialty is ecology and wetlands specifically. Everything Andy has said is correct. There are three wetlands identified on the site. Two of them, we expect the Army Corps of Engineers to take jurisdiction of. One of them that's centrally located in the site is fully expected to be considered isolated or non-jurisdictional. We have submitted that request to the Army Corps of Engineers, but haven't had a response yet, so that is still pending. None of the wetlands are expected to be DUC jurisdictional. So we have requested their concurrence on that matter, but again, haven't received it yet. But we would love to hear a final decision on the town's regulations, whether there would be setbacks required.
So, so maybe, maybe this is something you need to think about is like, what is the difference between a building envelope and actually having these driven piles? Because again, these are not buildings. These are not going to affect the drainage or affect the habitat of the, of the wetland. I think it sounds like the intention's different, but perhaps there's more discussion than these.
I will discuss this in the planning board's. But I will discuss with her.
So what I'd like to do at this point, we're gonna wait to hear from you exaltative to DUC and Army Corps. We ought to start preparing for a public hearing. And to do so, we should go into seeker.
Are you prepared? You, you guys wanna go through seeker tonight? I, I have gone through part one and I have pretty much on part two, which is about responsibility. You know, if you're wanting to do that tonight.
For the subdivision?
Well, it's actually gonna be the site plan or subdivision itself.
And especially, so I mean, there's, there's, there's three distinct.
This would be a preliminary determination, secret determination, subject to a possibility of redetermination based upon
information.
Additional information.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're not talking about pipeline just yet.
Well, no, I think we are. I, I, I think that from we can't do a secret analysis unless you, unless you consider everything, right? You have to consider the subdivision part of there. You have to consider where the arrays are going to go on the site. And the special permit is to allow for a solar farm. The product. So I think we need to consider all of it as part of the secret determination. And it's not a complicated analysis. Because as I've gone through and I've gone through part one, there's only two things that kind of struck out, and struck out to me, so.
If, if I may, we have had a couple of tweaks to our site plans. So last time it was, we were here, I'd like to make sure that the board is aware of those quickly before we start.
You have it, you have it.
That, yeah. So very, very quickly, FAA, we, as requested at the last meeting, we submitted a notice of proposed construction with the FAA. They came back, no hazard, no, no issues, nothing to be done. So our updated proposed layout is here. Because we have a little bit more time to do some value engineering, we actually moved some of the electrical equipment, the main transformer pads and sort of where the energy is collected up into the more central portion of the site, which eliminates low voltage PC wiring losses. Because actually, you lose electricity due to resistance and issues with low voltage PC. So that required bringing in access, our access road further to the north into more of the central area of the property. It's both along the southern road for deliveries as well as for ongoing EMS access. So essentially, the, the area covered by the arrays is the same, the screening plan is the same. It's gonna look substantially the same. We just have a little bit of a longer access road. Our detention basin is now on the south side of the property right there. And, and we have a small swale to direct access rainfall to that driver detention basin. So heavy rainfalls. We'll also reduce the fence to the, the seven feet, which it could have been the first time when we talked about, last time we were here. Regarding the, the point of interconnection, there was discussion last time about making that a ground mounted or underground interconnection. We had a couple conversations with National Grid and essentially, you know, that's gonna add quite a bit more cost, more time to the, to the process. We're not entirely sure we have enough room here to do that based on the need for an access road and, and the amount of space the Warner's at least was. It has more drainage impacts and it doesn't really significantly reduce the visibility of the project infrastructure. You know, unlike, I believe, mentioned there was one place that had the poles kind of really starkly obvious. And, you know, given the layout of the sites, you know, the most feasible thing for us is to keep an overhead interconnection with the five poles as designed. And those poles also need to be on the east side of the roads that we avoid tree line issues. National Grid won't let us put it up against the tree line on the neighbor's property to the west.
That's very nice, but you're talking about additional cost, additional time. That thing is gonna be up here for the next thirty to thirty-five years. I don't mind you taking a little more time to figure out a way to make that less ugly and obvious than it is right now. You're gonna go away, we're gonna be here. I don't wanna look at that thing every time I drive by it the way it is today. So I'd like to see what you can do to fix it. By hiding it better than it is, underground, I don't care how you do it. Maybe costs more, but the grand overall scheme of things. This is a twenty-five million dollar project, isn't it?
No, no, half that.
Just half that. Oh, I'm sorry.
Or already, you already have a very expensive National Grid interconnect at this site. There's, this, these, solar projects aren't giant moneymakers. This project is rather tight and, you know, well into the six figures is, is, you know, additional cost that we're simply not prepared to spend. Components have gone up as well, you know, in the grand, you know, just like a lot of things, solar components for the first time in history have been up quite a bit over the last year or so. And I, you know, I think that a handful of, of power poles are gonna fade into the background just quickly as, you know, as they, as the weather, as they get. Nobody's gonna, nobody's gonna notice that either.
Well, I, I think. One, why is this project's interconnection more expensive than others?
It is impossible for us to tell ahead of time when we start developing a project, how expensive their connections are gonna be. National Grid and all the utilities hold their system data very, very close to the vest. And so we have to spend quite a bit of money and have them do quite a bit of studies in order to come back with what's called a Caesar combined electrical system impact report, that's what it is, or coordinated. Anyway, that is when, when they've done all of their studies of, of the local grid in the area, they come back and say, these the upgrades you're gonna have to do, if any, to put your project on the grid reliable. So what we are gonna have to do is do upgrades in this, in a columnar crossing substation, which is a couple miles to the vest on Calmer, Manlius Road. And then extend some additional new wiring down their poles from that substation. I think we're coming from that sub, we might start at Fisher Road or whatever that road is, just east of the substation and come west to connect to this project here. So those were things that cost quite a bit of money for, for us to pay National Grid to do.
Okay, so a couple things. One, I, I drove by there again today. And I know, because I know you guys said that this, you're saying that this site isn't invisible in some other sites. But I drove by again today and where the interconnection and the poles are going to be, there's nothing there. And I mean, people may say the area around there is a little more cluttered than some others and it may won't blend in, but I don't feel that way. I don't, I don't think it's gonna blend in. I think these poles are gonna stick out. We're gonna just make it look worse than it is instead of better. So that's my feeling. I just don't feel like, but it's, you say the existing vegetation and general site conditions of this project will do more to reduce the visibility of the new intersection pole compared to other projects that I'm, I don't agree, I disagree with that statement. I think that's true. And like Arnie's saying, I, I think it's worth the additional time and investment. We have a lot of solar projects come to us, so I feel like we would get another one if you guys are able to to look into this and, and do this.
So you're just looking at it from a, sorry, go ahead, Kelly.
No, I'm just saying, like, we were asking to, you know, for these kinds of things to look more into it instead of just saying that it's just extra cost and extra time.
And what further looking into it? We have, we have looked into it. We've had conversations. We know it's, you know, could be.
I agree with Valerie and Arnie. You have a business decision to make, period. It's not, it, it's not our problem. It's something you need to look into, not us.
Right, so what, what is the message here?
We want it underground.
Is that the message?
That's the message.
It's starkly.
I think that's, my mistake.
We've learned a lot from our solar projects.
Right, right.
So we're trying to progress as we go along.
Okay. So I, I think one of the things we could do, and we can begin the seeker process, and we don't have to make a decision tonight, but we can identify environmental issues that might impact your decision on seeker, and that might be one of the issues.
Yeah.
Yeah, the visual impact, the visual impact of these poles and how important it is to this. So.
I do. Only a handful of questions, which will impact the seeker process, perhaps. I agree with what's been said about the poles and I think that I, while I don't know the numbers, which I know are a very important part of, of the decision-making process and whether you choose to pursue it. I think that's something that might be helpful for the board would be, and I don't know if this, where we are with this project, if this is the second presentation, if you provided any visual graphics of, you know, a mock-up, like looking from either way. I drove by the site today as well. But something that's really helpful with these, I've found, is that, you know, taking a, a picture and then imposing things on there.
Right.
Doing kind of little interactions, doing it, if you can find the imagery when the trees are in leaf as well as when they're without.
I do blur tests and leaves, I think.
Yeah, so I think that that would be something that you would wanna see.
Yeah. Can I just ask a third fine question? What is it about, I mean, there, there, there are power poles all over this place, on almost every single road we go down. What is it about these that are particularly objection?
So, from my opinion with this stuff, we are culturally used to seeing utility. So, but from my opinion with this stuff, we are culturally used to seeing utility poles.
Right.
A parallel along roadways, um, at a, at a certain spacing and those are things that. From, you know, a behavioral point of view, we are used to seeing and they don't stand out for us anymore. Um, when you see a grouping of poles with this much mechanical equipment up on the top, this close together. It jumps out for the eye as something unusual and noteworthy and I think that that tends to, um. Alarm or alert people that, that something doesn't look pleasing because it's, it's mechanical looking. Um, item, so going underground is the first instinct. There are a lot of residences around there, across the street and either side.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I mean, we, I called everybody on the uh, CBA notice list and. You know, heard, no, no, three, had three responses or, and I should speak with three people. Um, two of which were friendly, positive, one was neutral, just wanted to ask.
Probably no idea there's gonna be all these poles.
I, I, perhaps not, I talked through the whole, you know, and we were looking at it, wasn't just.
Yeah, they're just getting solar, most likely, yeah, so if you could. Provide that, I think that would be helpful, I don't know where that falls within the um, eating schedule and submissions and all that kind of stuff, but I think that that's something that I.
You've got plenty of time for that, but just so you know, I am of the same opinion what Aaron just said.
Yeah.
It, it is a visual disturbance seeing so many poles so close together. They're not spread out like we are commonly used to and it, and it is a significant visual impact that is adverse for our town.
Okay.
You can just take a look at the two facilities that have already been.
Uh, yeah, I've seen these all over the site, yeah, yeah. I know I kind of disagree, but that's a personal opinion and I'm not gonna say that my opinion is right, so I, I, I hear you loud and clear.
I think that's kind of where that particular opinion comes to come from. Is that it's not something that we're accustomed to seeing and it's like subconscious. Recognition versus those.
Yeah.
So, um, if you could, it's really common to make those kinds of drawings and stuff, if you could.
Good.
Could pull that together, of course, I think that would be really helpful.
We'll, we'll discuss this whole situation and this whole request, we'll, we'll e- either do that or we'll, we'll kick around the underground a little more.
Yeah.
Not, you know, yeah, well, well, we think.
I'm not familiar with underground, um.
I mean, it's a big, like, my experience is that it's a fairly large mechanical structure, physical structure, you know, right by the access road as well.
It's probably a vault of some sort.
It, it, there's always, there's always above ground equipment as well.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, but then, is it ground mounted or underground?
So I'm not familiar with how National Grid does under, does, I don't know, the, the design specifically, because we've never been asked to do this. And I've never seen one myself, I've, I've talked to National Grid about costs and reengineering, um, but. Uh, my experience in Minnesota where we, we, we did do a couple of these, um. For, for a variety of reasons is that there's still, it's still, it's, there's, there's electrical boxes, there's metal containers. There's, there's switch gear, not everything is underground because those switches that are full mounted have to be accessible and those are in locked cabinets at ground level. The recloser, which would be full mounted, has to be mounted at ground level, those are not all buried, like the wires are buried. You know, but the connections come up or maybe the connections are done underground, there's always equipment up at the site.
All right, so the other questions that I have are a little bit more, um, gonna be dependent upon when your wetland delineation, um, stuff comes back. Um, I did notice that you had shown on, on, so C one oh three, which is your site plan.
Mm-hmm.
On the northern end, there's a, um. Vegetated rail. Access or the access path. Twenty foot wide, well, smart perimeter access path in some spots, but then there's one going right through wetland area and I was wondering why that. Particular line was chosen, was it for best access?
Speaking of the one up here on the farthest.
Yeah, that best access to the raise, is that why, um, it's not even like not the best spot if you're trying to avoid wetland disturbance?
Uh, so that's just vacant ground. There's nothing gonna be built there whatsoever, it's simply an access path so that people can go, can get back and forth and these, these wetlands are fairly minor, it's not.
Right.
They're, you know, soaking wet or.
No, I understand, I've seen it.
Yeah.
But if you were to need to access that.
We'd certainly move it down probably fifty feet if that would, if that would.
Probably not be the best spot if we needed to drive something in there and it receives a wet, wetness or. Just, I'm just curious, it seems odd that.
I'm thinking more about spacing, like how, how many, like, but I, I think the point is taken well.
See what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely, yes, absolutely.
Another one of the notes said do not disturb wetland to create the path and so I was. I just wanted to make sure that those things kind of are taken into account and it might end up being a non-issue.
Yeah.
Depending, um, but it still might be a good management practice. Because it will still remain the way it is, whether it's delineated or not, that it might be a good idea to remove that access path. Out of the wetlands, wet area, um. And then you can just put your array right through there, that's a good spot, honestly, for those, the poles don't do a whole lot of damage, um. What was the vehicle set?
So you're saying that the access road that's being proposed?
It's not an access road, it's this path, it's this area that's left without the array. Or, you know, if they needed to access to fix something.
I just wanna make sure I understand.
It, it's shown going through the wet area.
So it's this, uh, so just orient, I'm a little zoomed in here.
So that's rotated, basically rotated from your plan.
Yeah, so now, so the plans are north is to the right on the plans. So here on my screen here, I'm showing north up, I've rotated the plans. And so as, as Ms. Reynolds is saying, we have our access road here and then we have the gravel access road in the middle. But you're speaking about this gap right here, we, we, we've saved twenty feet between edge of panel to edge of panel. The act is just a, just an, an area for, for people personnel to get. To access east and west.
And where's the wetland area, is that the wetland?
The hatched area right here.
Yeah.
Yep, so that's a good point that that's kind of going right through, through the middle of it, so I think we, we're chipped it down, I think that could preserve our. Uh, our desired access and just, that, that seems, that seems like very logical, yeah.
Um. So as a curiosity question, I see the radius of use for the, um. Entrance and the, um, turnarounds and everything within are fifty-five and sixty-five, what was the vehicle that you were using, was it an ambulance?
That was a delivery vehicle actually, which is great, which is quite a bit larger than an ambulance, I think it's gonna like a large flatbed, flatbed.
Okay.
Um. Uh, Vinnie, if you're on the phone or Mallory, if you know, um. I believe that our, when we were looking at standard ambulance radiuses, they were much smaller than that, like thirty feet, right?
That, I was just.
Yeah, so, so the reason, and when, when I saw this reengineered, this, this reengineered site or, you know, changes inside that, that. It's uh, popped out to me too, like wow, these are really big.
Right.
And that's for ongoing, uh, that's for delivery of the main power transformers, which are gonna be here on the site. Um, as well as for larger access for EMS, so we're, we're exceeding ambulance, uh, radiuses and access. And designed for what we believe the biggest, longest vehicle would be out on site, which would be the delivery.
For installation.
Yes.
So with.
And but I, I think we'd want to retain some of that in case there's any need for future maintenance or a transformer replacement.
Okay, so also, I was noticing in here that. There's a very big difference, as you know, when, um, solar farms are built between. Then the loading requirements on the roadway for construction versus. And in this site, it looks like you're using both. You're using the, the, the permanent road area as also your construction access. And so a significant amount of restoration, D E C level restoration will be required to turn that back.
After.
To your post-develop.
Yeah.
Your post.
In twenty-five years.
No, 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 I mean, so the areas that are shown here are shown as. Curvaceous. Your, your porous pavement areas.
Right, curable.
The grated stone over geogrid.
Mm-hmm.
But is that? Is that the same area, the, the same material and the same, you mean, you're gonna be coming in and putting that down and then leaving it? And that's why you got the stabilized construction entry?
I believe that is the intention is that what we build for construction would be an ongoing. Uh, ongoing use as well, but I, but I, I'm starting to get a little outside my comfort zone, so.
So I do have some questions about how that transitions with becoming, so a lot of times what I see happening is. It's designed as, you know, a geogrid and then a grated stone and it gets. Filled up with soil during the construction process and it's no longer really all that permeable.
Mm-hmm.
And so what is referenced in the general notes and in the SWIP is to bring that back to restoration to remove the action.
Mm-hmm.
And then re- return and restore that profile to a permeable porous material. Because I'm guessing that that was probably used for your.
I understand.
For your stormwater application too.
Yeah, uh.
And then just to take that one last step. Then if those were the radiuses that were used to design the internal pavement area. If that's really just for installation of the equipment and delivery. Then could that area be significantly reduced in the post-construction? Permanent state, if you're really just providing some emergency access or, you know, possibly to bring in a piece of equipment. I wouldn't necessarily suggest that you reduce the, or increase the array footprint to compensate. But you might be able to reduce the pavement area and, and then either put reinforced. Reinforcement under the turf with some, you know. Uh, something to, so they could drive off the edge if they needed to, but I don't know about decommissioning, you know, process, but.
Right.
There's gonna be a lot longer that that's, you know, I didn't, they never seem to get built the way that it's shown.
Mm-hmm.
As far as this piano goes, do you wanna? Thank you.
Those are issues that we have on other sites.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think that it gets kind of missed in the intention with the notes and the drawings and the way the SWIPs are written.
Hmm.
To the way that it actually ends up being built. And, you know, we wanna obviously take care of the way that it's being built, but contractors are pretty competent when it comes to this kind of stuff. But it's more like, what are we left with in the end, it ends up just being a gravel road that gets filled in the dirt.
Uh, understood, uh. Uh, Vinnie, Vinnie DeCastelnoa was on the phone, he, he's a designer, designer on the site. Uh, Vinnie, if you've been listening, I'd appreciate any of your feedback on, on what, uh, Ms. Reynolds has been asking about.
Yeah, I certainly, can you guys hear me right? Uh, yeah, I, I certainly understand your concern, you know. We, we, we did file and design it, you know, with, with the SWIPs and all that, so. I, I understand your concern saying that. It may not, you know, if it's gonna get clogged with dirt, it may not be built in person as it is. Yeah, intended to be, um. And you, you, you've said you've encountered this before on previous sites, correct?
Yes.
Um, may I ask what, what your solution was for it, did, did they? Remove it and remove the soil underneath or was it all new rock they put down?
They came in, they redeveloped it and it was underneath the guys in New York State P E C. Because there were complaints with neighbors. They came in and they redid the SWIP to, um, to, uh, the standards and redeveloped the site.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess it's something that would require a bit more investigation by us to, to come up with. You know, do you see what we wanna do there?
It's essentially already outlined in your SWIP.
And your point is that just it, that, that level of work that's in our SWIP is.
We wanna see it done that way.
Oh, sure, yeah.
But it doesn't usually end up good.
Got it, so that's an enforcement question, really?
Well, it's something that we wanna make sure that you understand now.
Oh, yeah.
Big box, right, to pull out all that dirty stone and it also can save you some.
Mm-hmm.
If you plan to have a layout.
Hmm.
A laydown access drive, you might construct that differently and of different material and maybe even cheaper.
Yeah.
Would your final, the detail that's shown here.
Right.
And so if you're gonna have to come back in and pull out the contaminated material, decompact. Everything underneath it according to the SWIP. You know, the boilerplate stuff in the SWIP, then you might come at it from a design point of view in a slightly different way.
Yeah.
Which might be in your benefit.
Sure.
Financially as well as, you know, you know, materials, delivery, all that kind of stuff, and then it might allow the final footprint to be smaller. You know, if you don't need to have, I don't know how wide that access road is, but your width might be a lot wider to bring in. Uh, you know, a traffic trailer to bring in these components and I know your laydown is right there by the corner.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but I'm really confused how you're gonna turn around those vehicles. And then what ends up happening is, you know, stone gets spread and, you know, are they gonna drive really all the way in here to turn around?
Yeah, I think that, that is the plan, certainly.
So that's.
So they stop there, they, they get offloaded by forklifts or whatever and then they continue, I think that would be it.
Yeah, so I think, I mean, the scale can be deceiving for people who aren't used to looking at the scale and our drives are half. They're fifty, you know, so what we're seeing here is a hundred is really, it's half. So, you know, in the fine print. There's a lot of gray area as far as if we need to make the laydown bigger, if we need to add more air, there's gonna be a job trailer in here. Like all this kind of stuff, vehicle parking for instruction, you've got your concrete washout. Your stockpile area for soil is supposed to be there, all these things, which there isn't a ton of usually, but. You know, I don't know how realistic that laydown area is as far as the volume of stuff, I mean, I've seen when these things start coming in. It's, it's a lot of material.
Right, right.
And so just logistically, I don't wanna see it kind of overflow. Under the, you know, if we need more area, we will do it according to the regulations. Boilerplate phrases that are in. In here, you know, and what are the? Volumes gonna be like, I know it's really early in the process to be asking a lot of these questions. But it's stuff that we wanna think about when it comes to the amount of disturbance and the cover types. Because that ultimately influences the size of your stormwater management areas and those are things that. While they seem very, you know, future tripping are very important for us now.
Yeah.
So it's kind of vibrating back.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that and let's show these whole things.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's like, oh, I have one more item, the fence on the we- on the west side.
Yes.
Um, it's shown right against the property line. Is that something that code wise, setbacks wise, I'm not familiar with the regulations, the numbers. Okay, so that's not a, not an issue there, okay.
Yeah, they kind of need to be on a property line.
Well, they weren't in other, on the other sides of it, they were right tight around the array and I was just confused, I wanted to make sure that.
And I can, I can share a little bit as why we pulled them off of the, of the east property line. And the south property line was so that, uh, Don Porter is gonna continue to access his woods that are to the north around our fence. So we left him a twenty foot path between property line and the fence so that he can continue to access the woods that are, uh, east of here.
Very good questions, I, I just wanna make sure I understand. From a. A layman standpoint, um, this issue with the road, so you're saying that the road that's being constructed. For the offloading of all this material that's going to come, this volume of material that's going to happen. Is where you get, uh, packed down and will become less pervious.
Mm-hmm.
And because it's going to become less pervious, does the SWIP take into account all of that? Or, or does the SWIP consider that road to be completely pervasive and you've been, and, and, and it's not accurate?
No, it's accurate, so the temporary construction stuff is covered by the temporary road use and the control measures.
Okay.
The final things here are designed for the post-construction.
So.
Situation, but what happens a lot of the time when you have such a, and these sites are really.
And it's gonna be the same road, that's the problem, right?
Yeah, so.
Okay, so if it were, if you have the. Pre-construction road, the one that all the construction materials are gonna come on, you. Different than, you can take that out once that is completed and have a separate road coming in, that would be the most.
Sometimes people do that, but it's not as common as you would.
Okay.
It's, it's common to, to, to go on top, but you have to pull, you have to decompact and pull it all out.
And is that, is that part of the SWIP where they?
It's already in there.
That they would decompact that, then it's an enforcement issue, ultimately, as to whether or not we made sure that that's actually being done.
Alright, alright, and you're making sure we're aware of it?
Yeah.
Maybe we, in case we're all, in case everybody's not as aware of it as they could be, we can rethink it, come back to something different.
Well, because what they could, I mean, if we're talking about opportunities for cost savings and things. They may choose to come. They may choose to come in with a different destruction road.
Okay.
Yeah.
In in terms of the SWIP though, you're comfortable with the way it's written, you just wanna make sure that. The second step is done, which is the lack after the. Pre, after the construction's been completed, make sure that that is revisited and. Things that they said they were going to do, they actually did.
Yeah, do you wanna add anything?
No, no, I think you're you're both fine. Okay, yeah, okay, I got it now, yeah.
I'm all set. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
Based upon what I'm hearing and the number of issues that are popped up. I think it's premature to go through SECP today. And uh I think it's premature to schedule a public hearing until we address a lot of these issues. Uh mostly mostly concerned with uh D E C, Army Corps of Engineers, their wetland uh. Development, uh ashal grid and they connect uh whether we can go underground with the poles. I think there's a lot of issues that have to be resolved before it's appropriate to uh to do our preliminary SECP and uh public hearing.
Of course, I'd like to see that go, but I'll take your your considerations. Um as we are are moving forth through this process and thinking about those kinds of things, I wanna make sure we. Like our our county referral, the plan for their referral process with the county. We spoke uh I think in January and you said that might be able to happen, Chairman, about all that, has or not. Just wanna kind of make sure that we're putting all the pieces in place.
We can forget some of that. We we will see too if that is accomplished.
Great, thank you, yeah. One other comment uh that I had, it it was an update from our last submittal was about decommissioning estimates. And plan um. You know, what we like to do, what we think is logical, is to reevaluate. The decommissioning costs that's meant every five years as opposed to fixing it in time now and then either having a. Uh a multiplier or an escalator on an annual basis because. Costs are gonna change up and down in one way or the other. We think it makes more sense to read, to to spend a little money to reevaluate it every ten years instead of. Um you know, an annual increase or the amount or or, you know, bonding for a hundred and twenty five percent or whatever those. Those uh costs, whatever we whatever structure makes sense. In addition to that, solar panels, there's a robust used solar panel market out there and they have quite a bit of value to them in. Their a- as they are, even if they were to come off of this site, it could be resold. Uh you know, they have a guaranteed half a percent degradation per year, uh and oftentimes it's less than that. So what we would like to request uh is that there be some consideration for salvage and resale value of the equipments.
No.
And that we uh do, which which is easier if we have the five year reevaluation of of costs and values.
Is your plan to post a bond or post cash?
Uh probably a bond. Uh we have a form that I just got today. I know we talked about that also, Mr. Chairman, that you would like to see. The form of that bond. I finally received that today, so I'm sorry I don't have it. I wasn't able to get it to you for this meeting, but our. Our preference right now is to post a bond.
One year bond?
Um Juliette, if you're on, you can, maybe you can comment. I don't know if that would be a one year bond.
Probably a five year bond.
Probably five years.
Did you see the language that I put? I keep going back to this with the language I gave Jamie.
What's that language?
What I, what I requested was that ninety days prior to the expiration of the term. It would give us notification that the bond was renewed. If you didn't do that, you have thirty days to take down the project. If you didn't do it in thirty days, we would do it and go against the bond to make sure we got paid.
That's rather strict.
Well, I, if if it go, if we went five years and the bond expired, we had nothing to go after.
Right, 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 yeah.
So that's, that's what I required with another one, whether or not. I I mean.
That has been something you've worked with on other projects.
That's, yes, and that's important to me. Because if the bond expires, we've got nothing to go after.
Yeah.
We've got nothing.
I should be rather see cash, but obviously that's uh.
Right, cash would be better.
We have gotten that.
Right, right.
Yeah.
Sorry, Andy, can you guys hear me? This is Juliette with Catalyze. Okay, good. Sorry about the interruption there. Um I'm the developer for the project working with Andy. Um thank you for your time tonight. I was trying to get in, I didn't hear um. The planning board members' comments regarding bond versus cash. Would you mind re- restating that?
Uh well, they prefer cash Juliette, but if there is a bond, uh board members, Rosetti would like. What was the language that it, we must provide proof of renewal within ninety days.
Ninety days.
And if we don't do that.
You have thirty days to dismantle it. I'm sorry, I got a frog.
Right.
You have thirty days to dismantle.
Right, you will.
If you don't do, we will do and go after the bond.
Right.
Okay, so pretty much we have ninety days to extend, right, prior to.
Our extension has to be done within ninety days prior to the expiration.
Right, yep, yep, okay.
How about a thirty day care and then thirty days to take it down, then you get thirty days.
It's gonna take longer than thirty days to take it down.
I I'm just.
Something that just gives us, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, you're you're going to renew your bond with ninety days of it, so this should.
Uh Juliette, I don't know if you, you know, I think as we've talked, you know, bond is preferred um.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, bond is preferred. Um it doesn't mean that cash, you know, we can't do cash, but we would prefer a bond.
So we'll take, we'll we'll assume that that language is gonna be put in any bonding agreement that we sign. Um and then. Well, it sounds like it's been done in the past, so I think that's a fairly safe assumption. Is it correct that the decommission agreement that we signed is with the board officially with town voted on or is that, how's that actually done?
The town board actually.
Signs it, right, based on the input.
But but they will take.
Yeah.
Language that we recommended by.
Right, absolutely, yeah. I just wanted to make sure I understood how.
And that can be, they could be a condition of the.
It should be, it should be.
Yeah, that's, that's great. That was gonna be my next question. Thank you. That could be a condition. It's so allowed. Great, thank you.
So Andy, we will be postponing this and awaiting word from you as I do uh several of these items. Uh before we put that on a calendar again.
Okay.
Um and at that point, we will then schedule SECP and then public hearing.
Yeah, I'm just thinking about any more about what have we resolved yet. Is, I I understand Mr. Rettany's opinion about salvage value. Is there any, is there any openness to discussing? Some component of salvage or uh or to understand there's real value here. And in in addition, you know, the operating asset of a solar project.
The reason I have an issue with Andy is because you own the panels. And any salvage value goes to you, not to us, that this man, so, oh, it's not a guarantee. It's not security to make sure it comes down. I I. That's, and I'm just one member, so that's how I look at it. And if I have a security entry in your car.
Right, right.
That'd be something I put.
Yeah. Are there ways to track that?
With me? No.
Well, right.
Before we adjourn this matter, uh I would entertain a motion to have the town planning board declared reagents.
Eric.
Second by Richard. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Progress.
Thank you, sir. Very good. Be back later next time, yeah.
Next item that we're gonna be calling on our agenda, see application by Quinn Pond is posing. This is their second presentation regarding the residential portion, the property located at fifty four forty. This is all under. All under one head. Yeah, this portion.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, thank you. My name's Brian Blueyard with C H A Insol, I'm a project engineer working on behalf of the developer. Uh also Charlie Brewer, who we met last time, is the applicant developer and we have Rowley Smith from Bond Sonic and Kane representing the project. Um as you mentioned, this is approximately fifty acres um of the residential component of the project. I understand that. Um the existing owner is working with the planning board and the boards on the commercial component. Uh to our south, so this is the residential component of the project comprising a little over um fifty acres within the R five. Zoning district to allow for um a new multifamily housing project. So at the last meeting, we introduced um the concept plan.
Oh, yeah.
Charlie will bring up the um the updated concept plan, but in talking with the board at the last meeting, there were a few takeaways and comments that we've had a chance to work on. Um we talked a little bit about creativity within the building design and some of the footprints and seeing what we could change. Um within the building footprints architecturally themselves. We also talked about um less exterior surface parking and trying to incorporate more parking within the buildings. Um we looked at different building layouts. We also had a comment to realign the main entrance so that it was directly opposing. Um the existing traffic signal as being a little, um what was previously shown is a little further north on North verdict street. Uh and then we also talked about the need to start to think about a clubhouse and pedestrian um trail connection sort of. In and around the amenity that we have with the the existing stuff on. What Charlie brought up here is the revised concept. So first you can look at the revised main driveway location directly opposite. Um the existing intersection at North verdict street. You also look at the um buildings along the street here. So these are two story townhomes. Um some of them would be provided with a basement where we have the advantage of the grade that sort of falls away to the pond. So there could be a walkout basement, but these are um townhomes that we looked at um positioning along North verdict street. And these are different from what was previously shown with our townhomes in the first concept, which was more of a stacked unit. Where you have unit on the first floor and unit on the second floor. And if you can remember that existing or the first concept, there was sort of the parking areas. That were directly accessed off the um main entrance drive and we were asked to to look at that. So these townhome footprints that we're using now are more side by side units. Where you would have a garage and a driveway for each unit off the main road. And the unit would have living space with the garage on the first floor, uh and then, you know, sleeping in bedrooms on the second floor. And then where possible, we would have sort of walkout basements that could face um the ones that are facing the pond. So a little bit different style for the townhomes. And you can see that those same townhomes wrap sort of the inner um edge of the of the south pond as you come around the main driveway. Uh in the rear of the site, in this area, we consolidated what was four, four story buildings into three, five story buildings. And this was done for um variety of different reasons. Um first is that each building now contains. One level of parking, so there's essentially a parking garage um within that ground floor with four stories of residential above it. Um and this provided us an opportunity to get a hundred and forty spaces within the buildings themselves. Um this also, this layout with the L shaped buildings is much different than you will recall with. The square buildings that were kind of in four quadrants and you can imagine the inside of that. In the middle of those four buildings, there was a lot of um buildings facing buildings. So the interior side of the units would be facing other buildings. So this L shape has been created so that, you know, the front that you present yourself with on the main entrance drive will be facing. The roadway with not a lot of incomforens and parking or other things and those units will look out over the townhomes. And then even on the inside, there will still be views from each direction, either the north pond or the south pond. Um and then the balance of the parking that we provided there uh is what's compliant with the town's um zoning code. Um so we do provide enough parking, but as we go through this process, I think we'll be looking to potentially ask if there's the opportunity to take some of that parking and. Leave it in a reserved area where there's the ability to build it if need be, but we do feel like the parking counts are a little excessive. So having the space reserved for parking, but possibly not having to um to build it up. And you'll also notice that directly opposite this, we provided for about six thousand square feet of clubhouse area. And it's a little parking area and then outdoor amenity space for things that we're thinking about, like the players or sports courts. We've also started to show um access around the pond with a walking trail, what we envisioned to be. Um and access to the waterway for people to either, um you know, fish or launch a kayak or canoe things of that sort. So this new plan represents um two hundred and ninety eight units, as I said, with um compliant parking counts. And really the main change is in the height of the building. The majority of the townhomes will be compliant two or three story with the basement level. Included um townhomes within the R five district, but obviously with the five story structure. Or even the four story structure that's on most remote point um out in the middle of the south pond. Will require um us to seek a a variance for building height against the district. Um what we do wanna mention is that we've come up with, obviously, why we believe that this variances is. Um something that would be good for the project because it is incredibly unique. Um starting with the fact that it's only in the rear portion of the property. So we've situated all the compliant, you know, more two story. So our residential buildings in the front of the property. Um and that we only be asking for the height variance for the easterly most portion of the property, which you can see is a lot different than. Possibly anywhere else in the town that you could possibly develop multifamily housing and that we're about seven hundred feet. Off of um North verdict street, which is a public way, so it's not as visible from the street. And also, this is much different in that it's very secluded in the back. Um you know, there's no direct neighbors. There's huge buffer areas between these buildings. And anything that exists to the north um or even across um, you know, the lines going pretty clear. So it is very secluded in terms of um where we're proposing that additional height. And one of the other reasons, the second reason is really the topography, starting with the fact that the site is incredibly challenging and as we work through this process. Um and start developing things like grading plans and other, you know, the stormwater management reports and drainage. The site is very challenging with the topography because there are a lot of existing steep slopes that we don't wanna impact. So there's a very small buildable area. Where we can position the building, so it obviously becomes more efficient um to be slightly taller rather than having a more. Um sprawled out, shorter, wider building footprint. So it's more efficient with the site plan that it does preserve some of these natural features. Like the steep slope in the in the pond areas. Um and and again, a part of the height is really to accommodate. More open space by burning a hundred and forty spaces into the parking garage. So it's really one level of parking with four stories of residential. Um when you look out there today, if you're if you're either driving by without the trees on, you can sort of see behind some of those um. Bacon houses that are along the front, you can see that this portion of the site is significantly lower in elevation than the roadway as well. Um in fact, the taller buildings um where they will be sitting, it's about twenty three feet lower in elevation than the roadway. So there's a perception that these buildings may not be as tall as just saying that they're five stories. Um because the roof line, when you measure the roof line from or verdict street is about forty five feet taller than the actual roadway elevation. So it's really not much taller than, you know, those forty uh forty foot buildings that would be permissible in the R five. We also looked at the buildings, obviously, directly across the street as one of our defensive um positions within the standards of proof that we have to justify. It's sort of the surroundings of the neighborhood and that the height variance wouldn't have a significant impact on the surroundings of the neighborhood. So we did specifically look at the other properties which are directly across the road on North verdict street, starting with the um town center retirement community. When you drive by there today, you can see that there's about a fifteen foot retaining wall in front of the site before you get to the parking area. Um and their building, the center of the building is about fifty feet tall with the two residential wings that you can see, they're about forty four feet tall. So really the perception is the fifteen foot retaining wall on a forty four um foot building, so it's about sixty feet tall. And what we're trying to convey to the board is that, you know, when you look at the surroundings, when you're traveling down North verdict street. That building being closer to the street and higher in elevation actually is perceived to be somewhat more um. not massive, but more masked in the terms of the scale than something that would be further off the street and slightly taller. And then we walk the hill, it's a little bit further in terms of visibility along North verdict, but there's a northeast medical center that's up there, which which is actually a five-story building on its own, right? And it's about seventy-six feet tall, but it also sits kind of up on up on the hill, which is obviously a lot more perception and height than our buildings would be. So what we intend to describe, hopefully, obviously, this is the planning board and we we are asking for the board's support to pursue that variance. There's obviously a variance application process that we need to go through with the VCA. But the first stop is to gain any feedback or support in order to formally make that application to the VCA, not only for the height variance, but the continued dialogue on some of the changes that we've made within the site in particular itself. So for that, unless there's anything earlier growing, I think we'll answer some questions and comments and.
Sure, yeah. Well, I I'd kind of like to make a statement on my own behalf. From everything you just said, I concur with you. This is a unique project. I do believe it would have a low impact on any adjoining properties. I believe it would be beneficial for our town, but we're dealing with our five zoning. Based upon our interpretation of our five zoning and consulting with our legal team here, we cannot do it. It violates density. It's my understanding that you currently have filed for an interpretation with the zoning board of appeals. And that that is scheduled for March sixteenth.
Correct.
Whenever the zoning board of appeals responds to that that question, we will abide by. But for the time being, we are interpreting that as a violation of density.
Sure.
And we cannot go forward with your project. In the event the zoning board says we've interpreted it wrong and they interpret otherwise, we'll go forward. But if in fact they concur with our opinion. Personally, I like your project and I like what you're trying to do. And at that point, I would hope that perhaps the developer and the town can come to some agreement regarding a planned unit development so that we could in fact move forward and do something. But that depends on whether the two of us can put our heads together and. So right now, based upon what I've heard, I don't think we can go forward because our interpretation of our fifteen of our five is that city will not permit it according to our town code.
I fully understand that. And, you know, maybe there's other comments from the board, but I could take a few minutes too, just to describe what the chairperson is is talking about in terms of the density calculation and it's really definitions in the code and how it's interpreted both by what what you've done as a precedent in the past and what we're prepared to present to the board is the zoning board of appeals, which you know, obviously does area variances and use variance, but they're also tasked with interpretations, which is the third aspect of interpreting certain definitions. And I can go through those.
I think we'll open it up to any of the members of the board and then yourself again.
Again, as you said, Joe, I'm talking personally, just as I look at this, our five requires no larger lots than ten acres. I think it's ten acres.
Yeah.
Ten acres. So I think the first step, in my opinion, would be we got to do a subdivision. Now, if the town board acts differently and does a P A D or whatever they do, we'll have to look at that. But right now, I I think this is a good project. It's a good location. But in my mind, I want to see a subdivision subdivision plan first before I can look at a site plan. Because if we're talking about ten acre parcels, you got, I don't know, four or five that have to be carved out here.
Sure.
In order to do that. So I I concur with with Joe that we're kind of we're nowhere right now.
Yeah, totally understand what you're saying. There's a lot of nuances and and in terms of the development team and some of the timetables, like there there has to at some point be kind of an understanding of whether or not we can move forward. And some of it is the defining useful space. Some of it may be how we physically accomplish the economics of the density and we can't have that interpretation. And obviously some of the more finer details with how it's actually laid out with property lines is understood. Sure.
I I agree with Joe and and Rich with the feeling sort of the project is the site for it. I think it's a great site for it and we're trying, we're in a position to look at higher density and this is a great area for it compared to other areas of the town. Other than our villages, we we don't get involved with. But I guess my question is, is there anything making, besides going to the E B A, we talk about working with the town board and this plan and unit development, is there anything they can start to now? I think like I I understand we'd have to comply subdivision wise for the density, but it's I I think a plan unit development might be an easier, cleaner way to go rather than have so many lots ultimately. So is there something they can do now? That's my.
Are you asking me that question?
Yes.
So Brody and I have discussed this concept and you know, his his interpretation of unusable district space, usable district space, asset recreation. I understand what he's saying. And I I I'm still thinking about that interpretation. Ultimately, you jump in, I will characterize, I'll try to characterize.
I think the broad surface.
Sure.
Okay.
So the the big issue is this this density issue. I think I think it's less, you know, where the property lines will be, that there needs to be a certain amount of usable space for us to have have a certain number of units. There's a calculation. And so the issue is of three definitions. There's usable space, unusable space and recreation area. So usable space is space which is used for dwelling structures, except for streets and stuff, parking. And and here's the key, active and passive recreation. Right? And then the code then goes down and defines what a recreation area is. It's places swimming, tennis courts, playground equipment, open land areas designed for passive recreation that are not included in a recreational area, although they may otherwise qualify as part of a usable district space. So what we're saying is.
So hold on one second.
Go to unusable. I'd like you to read your answers.
So unusable is any part of a lot area which has more than fifty percent slope. So it's unusable because it's slow. Or it if the, we waved fine, or is subject to periodic flooding. The periodic flooding, not like a surface water body, but something that floods and drains. Or is not an integral part of the overall development. So what Tim and I were talking about and my argument, which is considering, but hasn't, you know, is still considering is that the idea, and if I could approach it, we could point something on the on the drawing board. Yeah. So in this project, the the buildings are arranged around this recreation area. They're all integrated in a trail that circles the recreation area. They're all marketed and focused on, but certainly recreation area. Are you talking about the pond?
Oh, the pond. Yes.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. So you say pond.
Yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
The is twin pond, you know, project.
Okay.
And so the 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 pond will be developed with a dock system, signage, rules and infrastructure to accommodate using it as a recreation area. So, you know, we really were trying to square in the in the in the code what recreation area means. And the definition of recreation area includes things like swimming, but also, you know, we went to the D E C. And the D E C code, you know, gives us a definition and it says bird watching, grilling, walking, swimming, waterways. You know, we looked at case law, Tim and I talked about this too, and it it said viewing viewing a lake, observing nature, bird watching, boating, swimming, active and passive recreation area includes water bodies. There's just no doubt about it. If you look at the state and court interpretations. So if it is integrated into the development plan and it is used for boating, swimming, kayaking, paddle boarding, walking along, picnicking, whatever, it is a recreation area. Now, the question then is how do you prevent unintended consequences? Because I know that this board and the zoning board doesn't want to create a rule where somebody can use like the back forty, like scrub land or swamp, like steep slopes as as as, you know, land to like beef up their calculations. Well, I think the people who wrote the code were very wise. Because in the way that they wrote the definition, they said that had to be an integral part of the development. Can't be the back forty, can't be the swamp that nobody sees in the back of the flag. It's got to be integrated into the development. Nothing could be more integrated into the development plan than this recreation area, which the entire plan is named after, circles. The units are primarily marketed for having a view on it and is all part of a trail system, a dock system. I won't repeat, but you know where I'm going, right? That that this is not going to create a bad precedent because what other water body in the town manliest is anything like this or could be developed in any way remotely like this.
So you're you're making you're making a very cogent argument that probably should be made in the zoning board of appeals after the planning board.
Well, we would like your recommendation. So so and and by the way, there's a question the zoning board of appeals that Tony raised, which is there hasn't really, there wasn't a denial by the code enforcement officer or the the issue itself, so whether it's properly before the zoning board of appeals, I'm not sure yet. All of that makes sense. But I think we do better. I think I think because of the uniqueness of this property, the lakes that are involved, the lake that is involved, the the grading that is going to be required. I think we can come up with a zoning district, a P U D for this specific property, which will accommodate everything you want to accommodate and make more sense. To me, the argument makes sense when until I think of the, until I think of a lake, which is a on a ninety acre lot or a hundred acre lot and the lake itself is ninety acres and there's ten acres of land. So you're going to tell me that we can put density on ten acres of land over a hundred acres? It doesn't make sense. It just doesn't. As a county board attorney, that is not the intention. When we talk of lots, when we talk of space, we're talking about land. We're not talking about water that can't be built on. That that's my, that that's my, just that that's been drilled into me for thirty years. So that 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 is the problem. But I don't think we have to go there. I think we can come up with a a zoning district that makes sense for this. And everybody, everybody I've talked, I've talked to the town board member just before I came here today and they're like, we want to we they want to meet with county plan. Everybody loves this concept. Just making sure we have a proper zoning in place, zoning district in place to accommodate the needs of the development.
Say this, for any reason we can recommend what you've just said to the zoning board of appeals. Because we very often recommend others today.
No, I I would argue that they have to look at the current zoning and what we have in our code and what we're talking about here is adding something new that isn't in our code. So I would be very cautious. Again, I'm just one person. I'd be very cautious to make any kind of recommendation to the Z B A.
I'm concerned you're spinning your wheels. And and as Valerie said, isn't there something we can do? And the answer is well, you you can go to the zoning board of appeals and see if they'll make a determination and reverse what our thought process is. Or you can proceed forward and try to come up with a planned unit development that's going to work out better for you in the long run. I'm not opposed to this project. I think this is beneficial for not only you, but for the town itself. And I'm I'm worried that you're spinning your wheels.
So we can only apply under the laws that exist. The planning and development that people are referring to doesn't exist yet. That'd be a political act. It's kind of we're going to create a new law. And we hope that that happens, but we can't do that. So what we're asking for, and you mentioned before, and Tim, I think that you you alluded to the fact that for something to go to zoning board for interpretation, we need a denial. And I think I think I heard that denial. You said you don't think it fits the zoning.
Yeah, I don't get to make that choice. The zoning board could.
But I mean, I most likely should make that denial. So for us, we can only, we can only do what is allowed under the laws that exist. We'd like to pursue the project. In the event that the town passes a new law that would make the project easier, we'd like to do that too.
Okay.
But in the interim, our only option is to go to the zoning board and seek the interpretation and the variances. And I'm hearing that this board approves of concept of the project. So we would ask for permission to go to that next step. And I understand that you're articulating that you don't think it fits within the current code. And that's fine. That allows us to then go to the zoning board and seek the interpretation. But that, we just need, we just need to get to that that next step. To seek the variances and interpretation, we would need to go forward. And in the interim, if if the town passes a new law, that allows us a different avenue to.
The terms like that pass a new law without working with you on that because of your project and it's your project. We want you're in with that. So that really has to be part of the discussion is, are you willing, is your client willing to sit down with the town board or sit down with the county board attorney, meeting chairman, planning board, some of the others on board to come up with a zoning district that makes more sense?
I mean, I we will go back to our client and see if we, yes, we are interested in working with the town and whatever way you're willing to work with us. I'm not sure. You're saying, I don't know how long it will take to create a new law, do that political process. That may be longer. There is, there's a possibility that if you do that and only that, it may be longer than our contract allows and that could.
Why don't we, why don't we do this? Why don't you and I talk tomorrow? You can talk to your client.
Yeah.
Then you call me tomorrow and we'll see if we could set up a preliminary meeting this week. Have that conversation with members of the headboard and members of the town board and let's see if we can come up with kind of parameters that we can at least begin to craft a local law. Doesn't, it won't take long because this part, we have a, we have a finite parcel there. And we can work off of this, come up with ideas that will affect this parcel. And I I personally don't think it would take that long to come up with a local law, a new zoning district, P U D, that would kind of the needs that we have.
Can we make a recommendation to this on the board or we can't?
Absolutely.
I mean, for from this meeting, can we make a recommendation to this on board for for such a meeting?
For for, I I I think the minutes will certainly reflect that. Does everybody agree that that is the the most formidable way to, does anybody disagree with that? Now, that that our five really doesn't capture what we have in as trying to accomplish it.
Yes.
Yes. Let me, if I could ask a question just because I've looked at this thing so many times. Is this now one parcel or are there several parcels that make up this site plan that you gave us?
So this is based on the subdivision plan that the owner is currently working on to divide the commercial pieces to the south.
Yeah.
And leave this, which is the approximately fifty acre piece.
Is this one parcel?
Currently is a part of one parcel.
Building elements.
Okay.
So then have.
There may be a re-subdivision or something.
Correct. But but then you have to face the issue where your parcel will be five acres, right? You you have to, you have to face that issue under our five, which doesn't make sense, right? We're saying that your parcel can't be any more than ten acres. Between the one and five.
Or I think it's less of more than five.
More than five, less than.
Yeah.
But it's planned unit development, pretty standard.
Yes, a planned unit development. That's why this doesn't make sense. What are you going to do? You're going to have ten different parcels, right? And that that has different parts of it being water and it it doesn't work. It doesn't make logical sense for a planning standard.
And I may be giving a hug myself in all of us, but. And I may be giving a hug myself in half of us, but my understanding, I don't know the history of the, the site as well as others. My understanding is it was a quarry.
Yes.
So that also could. Play a role in this rezoning because it's a unique site in that fact that there's a quarry. We have another quarry that's coming to end soon. So it's almost like a reclamation site or, you know.
It's a huge opportunity too, because it was used almost like industrially, you know, for years. And now you have this really creative opportunity entirely, and I've been struggling to figure out like, how can you develop it? You know, in a way that makes economic sense, but also has different unit types and could be attractive to other peoples that they're all just not going to the north end of the county, you know? So there's a need for housing globally, um, in our county and throughout. And it sounds like there is support of the project that could be developed here. It's just now I'm working out with council, like the, and the town board, kind of the zoning nuances of how to accomplish it. Because it seems like there's support of the project as a whole. Um, and so that's appreciated very much. And it sounds like, you know, you guys are trying to figure out, we're gonna even recommend something to the town board, so the supports there. I think from our side, it's really timing, which is really our problem and certainly none of yours.
We, we sensitive to the time issue. But E, under section one fifty-five, a lot of which is our five, says minimum requirement for lot size shall be as follows. Lot area. I think a lot area, what am I thinking about? I'm thinking about water, I'm thinking about building, right? No less than five acres, but no more than ten acres. What do we, what do we have there? What is this?
Fifty acres.
Fifty acres, so it's certainly bigger than.
No, it's not fifty. It's fifty with the water.
Okay, so then what is it?
Right, it would have to be subdivided into smaller lots.
Correct.
Under, I totally understand what you're saying, that that may look cumbersome.
Even if it were fifty acres, including the water, what are you gonna do? You're gonna subdivide water? Like, are you gonna put lots, lot lines in the water and create five acre lots in the water? It doesn't make sense.
Well, I mean, it wouldn't be just water, but, but the lots would include land and water.
So if I may, this is the basic reason why planning unit development is a popular option. And so. I think they need to keep moving for a lot of reasons. But I think that that's, that's why they don't exist. This is the site that these things are meant for. And, you know, I think it's a difficult site to develop. But I think that the location and the needs and everything make it a unique opportunity to. To kind of bring manliness further into the way that we wanted to go. A vision type thing. This, you're never gonna see this somewhere else. And I think that it's worth going to the trouble of making it happen. And I would like to say thank you for the effort put in and looking at everything since we walked the site and the comments that we made before. And, um, I'm not pervy yet to how a lot of the details of the management code works. But I think that professionals in that regard can, can be made, can be worked out, right?
Right, right. I, I think, yeah, I, I think it's a, it's a great project, it makes sense. Personally, I would not like to see this done by variance. I would like to see it done with the cooperation of the town board coming up with, there's an overlay district, uh, UD, whatever it might be. Nation zoning, um, but I think it's worth, I think it's worth.
Was zoning on this property had been changed?
Yeah, yeah, too many times.
Thousands of times since I, I've been here twenty five years.
At least every time it gets a little more detailed, right? Cause our five sounded like probably appropriate at the time, but you didn't have.
But it sounded appropriate based on the density that they.
Leading multifamily, basically, is the use that was envisioned. It wasn't how can we specifically create something that's more detailed with, um, you know.
Well, yeah, and it was, these, these were not envisioned in our five.
Yeah.
They just weren't. And maybe some of that. But this, I see why you would wanna do this. And just now we need to put our heads together.
I think in general, the, I think the building, I have no problem with it. Um, especially in looking at the, um, section.
Yeah, there was a diagram.
Possibly even be dropped down a little more. I mean, I think that it probably is overparking. Um, and I'd like to see, you know, my comments, which I won't go into it, is like, I don't think it's worth everybody's time. But, um, you know, are more related to site maintenance stuff. And I think that it's probably a little bit premature, but I can see the effort that's put into, um, you know, accommodate a lot of that. And the complexity of the, you know, structural development loan in order to put these in there is a lot.
Yeah. Okay, bottom line. Right now, you are scheduled in front of the zoning board of appeals for March sixteenth. Uh, you are welcome to proceed forward with that. If and when you determine you want to try to sit down with the town for a planned unit development and try to work something after that. Since we're already contacted, and then really you'll make those arrangements. I think the consensus here is, we like what you're trying to do and we, we think it would benefit the town, but we are just currently under the R five. We very much appreciate your time and, uh, thank you.
Thanks, man.
You're welcome. The, uh, the next item on our agenda is an application by Icon Companies. This is the first presentation for site plan approval for property located in six hundred Enders Road, Manlius. All under one can snap number will be seventeen point two dash one dash four.
Hi, evening, sir. I'm Jeremy Arts with Core Level Architecture, um, the architect for Icon Companies on this project. Icon Companies is on my, on the virtual. And can you bring up my site for this presentation?
Thank you for being very patient to see.
Also, at this point, when I saw a close night show, but it is what it is. Uh, basically, uh, while you guys have, informing you, uh, what we're doing now is, uh, we're, are redeveloping the existing, I believe it's called Eastern Bible Church. Into a mixed-use housing. So I need to buy it up into apartments in there. And I think we have a total of eighteen apartments with twenty-two bedrooms. It's usually a one bedroom and two bedroom apartments. And the main thing we're doing here is we are gonna be removing about forty thousand per feet of pavement and turning it back into green space. We only need about approximately fifty-four to fifty-six of parking spots. All the excess pavement that exists on the plane, we will be rebuilding at this entirety. And turning it back, probably just to green space.
Why did you calculate fifty-four to fifty-six parking spaces?
I, I believe my understanding was just two parking spaces per bedroom. We have twenty-two bedrooms and then the third floor, there's a full office area. And we calculated we would need about eight parking spaces for, for that.
Okay.
Exactly, I think it's two spaces for apartments.
I thought it was bedroom, my apologies, my interpretation.
But I think we may need less.
You did apologize, we may need less. I thought I read it as, like, two parking spaces per bedroom. You see me, they have.
I heard that.
Do you okay with that?
Yeah, well, the revision that they sent us, that was approved. They looked back.
It was changed. I don't think it was ever changed.
It's been a month. Thank you.
And it's.
I'll bring my own jump drive next time for this.
Who's the one that adopted it in January, playing best meeting?
Excellent. Yeah, so this, uh, the shaded green area that you see here is all the driven pavement area that we would remove from the equation. And actually, right now, the site, it feeds with a lot of lot coverage. With removal of this extra pavement, we like to be within the lot coverage of the site.
Well, you're looking for that, I have a couple of questions. That, that, um, I'm familiar with the building. I've been inside of it actually for like a mom's room that I was in. So I, I understand the layout and the floors and all that kind of stuff. Um, and so, and I looked at your floor plans, I looked at the apartment style and stuff. Um, I've got like five questions. So what is the target popu-, like the target population for these apartments? And I'm new to the board as of January, so if you've been before, you can explain this.
Oh, please, super to draw here, man?
Yeah, if everyone can hear me okay. Uh, good, great question. So I'm from the area. I've got, uh, in-laws that live in Academy Hill. I've got friends that live in Eagle Hill and Academy Hill. Over the last two years, I know a lot of people who've wanted to move into the community. And the housing market's been so crazy that, uh, they've really been unable to find a, a home to purchase for their family. So I think that's one area of people we can target. Uh, the other would be the empty nesters that are in the community now and would love to capitalize on the housing market and the equity they built in their, their homes. Uh, they'd love to sell, but they don't wanna leave the community. So, um, many people I know personally have expressed they'd love to have a product in the market where it's large enough and it has the finishes. They could see themselves living in for the next ten to fifteen years and justify selling their home. So I think there's a bunch of young families and a bunch of empty nesters that would probably fill this place up pretty quickly. That's who we're going after.
All right, so having sense based on the one bedroom, um, you know, side of the, um, unit. I think I, for the empty nesters, I think I have a hard time, um, with young families wanting to move into these. Because I think they would have grown them if they're young families. Um, and then, which I'll jump down to the, one of the other ones, but, um. I was guessing empty nesters is gonna be one of the answers. And I think that. Based on the way the site access is configured and the internals of the building that is the. Like the handicap access and the accessibility in general is gonna make that a little bit harder. Because not all the units are accessible. Um, wheelchair accessible or either that kind of thing. And there's no elevator that I could find.
There isn't.
So I think that that, that could be a little bit tricky with. The other target population was gonna be for the office spaces. And, um, that might be without an elevator, a little bit harder. You know, for those as well, I don't know if you already had, and you know, people that you were, had interested in that, that don't need an elevator. Delivery supplies, materials, furniture, clientele, that kind of stuff. Um, and then with regard to the, that type of user. I think, and it may be second nature, considering this is your, your first visit. But I'd like to see some of the outdoor spaces that you're reclaiming be curated maybe a little bit more to be more appealing to those types of, um, people. You know, I guess, you, you know, like outdoor recreational opportunities, you know, gathering spaces, um, a little bit more in the site work, um, department.
We were definitely, it was something we've developmentally discussing internally. And now we try to go with just green space, but that was something that we had discussed.
Yeah, so I, I think that that would help to flush out some of your circulation, um, pedestrian and vehicular. And then with the breakdown of where you kept the parking versus remove the parking. Would those spaces be allocated like numerically to the units? Or would it be just kind of first come, first served? Because, you know, that might, there's all these individual access points for different units. And some are accessible, you know, strictly with their own access. All through the main part, like, I think that it could be a little bit confusing if these folks down here want to pull in their, the parking lot. And they have a dedicated door, but they can't park anywhere near there. So deciding how many parking spaces you, you keep in each area. Based on how many people would access from different areas of the building, I think, is something that would be really important. And then I'm guessing that your next submission is going to include grading and drainage and lighting. I know what's there and it, it sort of functions. Um, but I think that some improvements will need to be made with that. And that might drive some of your site design from a cost perspective. You know, how you're gonna build it. And then I'd like to see some connections to the residential communities thereby. Like, I, I completely agree that people moving in and out of the neighborhood is a big thing. People are moving in to retire from the adjacent, you know. Four-bedroom houses that are all in there, they wanna have places so they can with their families perhaps they have. But I think that we're really trying to move towards a pedestrian friendly area.
Like additional walkways and make.
Well, I'd like to see, and I don't know, you know, we're in the midst of the comprehensive plan and I don't know how this all will play into it. But, you know, with the schools right here. And the gas stations and the hardware store and the daycare and the, all the other things. The pizza places, the liquor store, the ice cream place, the bank. A lot of these people might wanna walk. All right, and, you know, I know that takes it to another level with the intersection. You know, it enters in ninety-two there, but I think it's something we have, if we don't start on spots like this, can't add, it's not gonna get added later. Um, you know, and, and I don't know if there's been talk previously of how we're working towards sidewalks. In areas or not in areas is probably a huge part of the comprehensive plan's point. But, um, I think that to be included, you know, all those people. Maybe they wanna be able to walk.
Well, that, we could definitely discuss it further with my client.
So I think that, that's all I have. Thank you.
I, I'll just, Jeremy, regarding sidewalks. And Tim, if I misspeak, jump into it. We can require this site to have sidewalks to go wherever we want it to go. But once you get off of this site, you then get into sidewalk districts, which some people want and some people don't want. Because, I'll give you an example, F N Road. They've been talking about putting a sidewalk down the F N Road from the painful Manlius for decades. But the people that live there, that will have the sidewalk in their house, they don't want it. And plus they have to pay for it, they don't wanna pay for it, even if they would use it. So having walkability in a site like this, that's one thing. But when you start to branch out into other areas with. Gas station or other neighborhoods or whatever, that's a whole discussion that really, I think, the town board has authority to do now less. Is that correct?
Well, it's true, um, it's true in terms of creating sidewalks in the town. It's not like a village, um, we, villagers can build their own sidewalks. Um, we have sidewalk districts where we've benefited from the sidewalk, by the sidewalks, actually paying for it.
Like in the city?
No, the city actually can build their own side gas lines. But you, towns developed differently than villages and different cities, um. Sidewalks are not a traditional town method. I'm not saying it shouldn't be, and I'm just saying as traditionally, one of the things you might wanna look at though. And, and I know this town board is absolutely fine with sidewalks, a very big issue with them. So they're, they're going to try to include that in your companies in some way. But for, for a development like this, and I'm just pointing on a map. Instead of the sidewalk going along Casanova, uh, and Enders Road. Maybe it might be more advantageous to bring it into the development. And, or because it's already, you know, there's, there's a true value there. There's the, uh, we.
I do believe there's actually a, I believe there's an existing sidewalk here.
Right.
And there is a drive that we're cutting off. There's, I don't know about the good sidewalk. I almost got somebody flying through. Here's this is a crossway that's still light.
Yeah, right.
So we. We put that connection up clearly, but we can definitely connect to this existing sidewalk there and get it more uh, on site.
That goes to the office building.
That was just, not sure. I thought it went to the public way, but I could be wrong.
Well, there's those, um, tan buildings. There's a doctor's office. There's a chiropractor. There's, um, some other like health spa.
Yeah.
Like, you know, there's more restaurants over there too.
Yes. Those are so speed that. You know, you connect to all of that. Your sidewalk system. As opposed to down in Enders Row, which. Yeah, but that, that would be, that would be a separate, the, the schools across the street.
And they have sidewalks.
We're there.
So it becomes a bigger. And that's kind of why.
Then you have to cross the street to get to the sidewalk on this side.
It becomes a bigger question and I'm.
You have to take care and take care of that issue, but. So it is definitely an issue that being discussed. And there is, because it looks more like a village now than it does. A town, right? And it, it functions more. With mixed use and like.
Yeah.
Is existing lighting on site that we will reuse? I think a few of the light fixtures, the light fixtures might have to be relocated for. For our new apartments, but we will, we plan to reuse. And we also plan to, if they're not already, make it an LED.
Okay, the product provides the full metrics.
I have some questions like this. Okay, sorry, Rachel. Go ahead.
No, go ahead.
You'll finish up.
Real quick question. Um. My understanding is that there will be one office. In the building.
If it's, uh, I'm a. You can go down. This stuff is, uh, it right here, this. This, this other stair goes up to, uh, the existing office. But right now it's, uh, the priest's office.
And that will be used by the church.
I don't know who's going to be the intent of the question, so Grazi, but it's going to contain as an office.
Grazi, this is great. Is that going to be the church's office?
Well, I, I, I'd like to respond to a couple of the questions. One of them was related to the office. So I'd like to loop you in with the, the first question. Um, the first question was, how would that be a rentable space without an elevator? It's currently an office. It's currently occupied in this office. It's historically been an office. And we're talking to a, an end user that would love to occupy that thing. Um. Will the church occupy it? We have no immediate plans for that? No. But it's a accessible space. It's turnkey. It's ready to be moved into and, um, again, historically it's been an office. So I don't see that being an issue. In, in terms, can, can I answer the other two questions that were, were posed before we go back to any other questions you might have? In terms of uh, empty nesters that. Had accessibility issues with the, the apartments. To me personally, this thing was designed to be beneficial to empty nesters. We have so many different. First floor accesses that nobody would ever have to use stairs or an elevator period, you know. There's grade level of three different spots in the building. So it was actually designed with empty nesters in mind. So I don't think that's going to be an issue. And then in terms of sidewalks and all that stuff, I think everything you guys have talked about up to this point is awesome. I'd love to see. You know, stingers and the plaza across the street with the ice cream place and the urgent care and the gas station. The school, daycare, everything connected would be great, but we can only control what's on our actual property. So. We can make that internal walkway, you know, connect to the town's plans, but we'd love to see some additional things happen there, but. And then if you don't mind, in terms of grading, lighting and drainage. It's already a, a lit lot. So we're only reducing the lot. We're happy to turn that into an LED lighting or energy efficient lighting. To reduce, you know, light pollution or whatever you're looking for there. Grading and drainage, I would defer to you or Jeremy in terms of what might be needed, but it's, we're not changing the grade and we're not changing any grade, uh, drainage. So. If there's additional things required for the next meeting, we're happy to gather them and get them to you. But I just wanted to get those questions and the answers out of the way before we, we continue.
Yeah, and I think if the survey doesn't include grades. That we see.
Yeah, that's the original survey.
So just because it's there now doesn't mean it's working now. Right? So I want to see. I want to see the, the survey with all the grading on it to show that everything is functioning. I mean, it might not even be. Working efficiently now and light bulbs.
I mean, we won't be taking out all the inverters payment and it'll become grass.
Right, but. That doesn't mean that the grading will still work.
What are you trying to grade for purposes of drainage? So. I'll jump in, but um, if we're, if they're disturbing less than a meter, um, we usually don't require. The state of the model. So a lot of pollution event. So. We don't usually have a grading plan if the disturbance is less than a meter. But this is going to be significantly improved. I think our certain land requirements, you say. They need kind of towards serving the city.
That's enough.
Yeah, so.
They're taking out, if they're taking out areas where things traditionally drain to, that.
Well, we don't, we don't want to have it.
Yeah.
General check basis, it's.
So usually they put together some US or something less than a swim that would.
Call the drainage required, yeah. And that's, it's got a lot of the same stuff and it went out all the.
I'm Jeremy.
So you know, you know what I'm.
I'm two points campus. It's something. For a matter of figure. And I always find out that, uh, there's a ramp entry. You know, I would. This apartment, this apartment, and then these guys, this apartment and that one have slow sidewalks. Uh, so they would be the acceptable, it'd be four apartments that could be considered acceptable apartments. In the situation, in the situation. The thing is that you're going to have some elevated block areas so they couldn't be used as a.
This is a general question because people. You know, the aging in, in place, I think is one of the terms that people usually move out of their home. You know, to stereotype that they, they raise their family nearby and they want to stick around and be there. A lot of people might not want to move in here and only be here till they have to have their hip replaced and then they can't get, and you know, um. So I don't think everything has to be without stairs, but having. That awareness and provisions for adaptability as people age. Um, and should need those things either temporarily or permanently might make it a little bit more scary.
Yeah, again, to that point, I believe our entire ground level is at grade, which is twelve units. So there'd be no stairs required for any of those twelve units. Then on the main floor. You have an additional three, four, five, six, seven units that are accessible from, from the front entrance there through the vestibule. So. I think there's two or three units total in the whole facility that would actually require stairs to get into or to, to access different rooms. So we've definitely addressed that. Portion of.
Questions, comment. Um. I, uh, I agree with the accessibility piece, even just from moving furniture up and down stairs. You kind of need to think about supplies like they were talking about. Since you are renovating the building, you should think about some additional accessibility, especially if that, if you have the handicap accessible spaces, you know, making sure that the building. Is accessible other than just a ground level access. Um. But my other, I mentioned the parking and Tim and I looked it up and it does say that it's two for apartments.
I follow that.
No, it's okay. I'm just saying there might be offer, more opportunity to, um. Reduce parking if that, that seems the way to go or more green space or like. Aaron's talking about these recreational pavilion picnic area. I don't know. Um. My other question though with. A opposite that kind of is, uh. Do we know now that these would be apartments, um. And I'm thinking of emergency vehicle access though, because if we are taking out the, the throughway, the, around, you know, the whole. Time later, they're going to be able to get in and out of those areas.
One of my thoughts was, while we are taking out the road here, um, uh, at some K twelve projects. Uh, we can, we can always just for the grids that allows grass to grow its own and those grids are rated for fire trucks. To drive on. So we could still maintain full access around the site, but it would be apparent that ours we're going to drive through people. If, if that was to be from that reverent fire to connect those two, uh, that would be, uh, something we can explore. Uh, I know it's usually in K twelve where we had a foot in these grids and they're rated for fire trucks.
Yeah, I know. There's pros and cons to keeping it a thorough fair and not, I mean, if there's people who are living there, I don't know if they want to be.
That are.
Input for the emergency vehicle access or.
I guess. It's a step for the building, right? See if it's access all the way around or not.
Yeah, I need, I need to look into that a little bit later.
And I think that, that is a part of that we'll talk about, right? And then it goes as he, he does then, you know, he's going to judge accordingly. He says he doesn't and lost that. I think that's depending on how many reading and.
Yeah, and it might play into how much, how much parking you need and how much. Red one.
Yeah, I mean, now it does. I need two parking per apartment.
Yeah. Compared to, yeah.
So that's thirty-six, forty-four, I can limit up to ten parking spots. Which yeah, probably we'd probably be, uh.
Well, it's like they don't really do that.
Only need, uh, both ones along there.
I guess that condition, you know, you know, people that live there may have guests that.
True, and, uh, Grazi and I did speak about that earlier today about, uh, having a little, a few extra.
Yes, and you're thirty-four percent lock coverage, which is very good.
Yeah.
Even with our. So I think you're doing pretty good.
Any other questions? Okay. Uh, I would entertain a motion to have the planning board declare a free agency. So we'll be sitting here for a second by Richard, by Valerie. Not Heather today, it's Valerie. On favor, I, I, motion carries, lead agency planning board. Um, this was your initial presentation to us.
Yeah.
Uh, I think we should, uh, put it out in the next available, uh. Meeting. And at that point, we'll, we'll see and state of public opinion. What is your business, what is your agenda?
Uh, so in order to get like the grading and stuff, definitely, I think we have to have them by the first, that definitely all happened. Uh, Brian, I, so I think we would be on the next meeting after that.
Okay.
Which would be the fifteenth, which is what I'm issued for. Uh, just, I stopped and I said once here and make sure we can turn around quickly. Surveyors are a little itty-bitty on whether or not we can turn around.
And I.
Grading, that's well.
Who is it? So this is the old, is this the?
That's the old one. Uh, I've worked with those guys numerous times. I'll probably reengage them.
Are you going to be writing to the thirteenth or not? Or you're writing on twenty-seven?
The fifteenth, I think we had to have your arms in by if you were going to be for the one after that.
That's the twenty-seven.
Yeah, so our goal is going to be for the twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, okay.
Yeah, so I think the other one we're going to have, have them by, I'd say.
Then we'll, we'll, uh, editorially run after the twenty-seven, subject to receipt of the paperwork. By the gentleman. And, uh. Sounds good.
Cool, thank you.
Alright.
It's not a good one.
I'll be very. Well, he's a. Uh, we're going to be doing that as, uh, so we live exam. Yeah, it's, I'm going to be one area for covering the whole town. Look great, there's not a. That we, I think it shields by four thousand, but my goal is growing, but I appreciate the water. Be ready on the motion. I know that we're running. We're waiting for it.
We have no other business today. And I saw, I'll make a motion. Got a motion by Arnie, Arnie's here. Arnie, I'm calling right now. Are you going to take that motion? Do we have a second? Valerie seconded, I'm a favor.